Let the record reflect that the meeting is reconvened via teleconference with all members present except for Mayor Bob Conley and Ms. Cohen, who are excused. You'll now stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first we'll do the minutes for approval, the executive minutes on of September 27th, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
No moves.
Second. Thank you. So we have Hoover and Byrne and all in favor?
Hi.
Like a motion for the regular minutes of September 27th, 2021?
No moves.
Second.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome to the public and welcome to back to the council. I'm Astri Bailey. I'm acting mayor. Mayor is down in South Carolina at a well-deserved family reunion. And first thing I would like to talk about is although I was unable to attend Bottle Hill Day for a very good reason, my son was getting married. I do understand that it was one of the best ever. The 2021 Bottle Hill Day was a tremendous success with over 10,000 people attending. Music, vendors, and attractions made for a very festive and successful event. And I think Mr. Hoover and Ms. Ehrlich will be amplifying those comments because they were there for real. So I think it's just terrific that Madison was able to bring it back and we had a good time. So the next thing I would like to announce is the employee of the month for October. Haley Hazen from the building department has been selected as employee of the month for October. For several, several weeks in late summer, Haley took on additional responsibilities to support the zoning department while employees from the department were on vacation. During this very busy period, Haley input the zoning applications into the S D L system, which allowed others in the department to stay in their roles. Her efforts kept the department from falling behind, which would have negatively affected many residents. So congratulations to Haley. I was talking to a realtor this summer also who said Madison Construction's Department is like unbelievably fantastic. Everybody is so nice, so helpful. Nobody has it as good as Madison does. So it's really kudos to our, our department and Russ Brown. And the second thing that I'd like to do tonight is proclaim Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October. Domestic violence occurs over all economic levels, over all communities, and it's really important that everybody is aware that this is a problem and that we can all help. So whereas the crime of domestic violence violates the basic human rights of safety and dignity, and whereas domestic violence affects all communities regardless of age, race, gender, economic status, religion, nationality, or educational background, and whereas the Department of Justice estimates that 1.3 million women and 835,000 men are the victims of physical violence by a partner each year, and whereas in Morris County, there are approximately 2,000 domestic violence offenses each year, which represents only a fraction of the domestic violence in the community since most cases are never reported. And whereas women aged 18 to 34 typically experience the highest rates of dating and domestic violence, and whereas victims of domestic violence are more likely to experience long-term mental and physical health concerns, including a higher risk of chronic disease, substance abuse, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, anxiety, and risky behaviors. And whereas the Morris Family Justice Center and its partner agencies serve domestic violence victims by operating around the clock with helplines and offering important crisis intervention support services, information, and referrals. Now therefore, I, Astri J. Bailey, Acting Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month with the objective of raising awareness of domestic violence and its devastating effects and supporting those experienced domestic violence. So I would like to give this proclamation to my good friend Virginia McBride, who has given over 30 years of, of help and support to the New Jersey Battered Women's Shelter. So Virginia, this is the proclamation. Thank you so much. We will make sure we get it to you. And if you have something to say, would be great.
Well, thank you, Astri, and thank you to the borough members. Really, really appreciate this. And on behalf of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month and JBWS, which is the Morris County Domestic Violence Shelter that offers safety, solution, and support for those victims of Morris County, we are very pleased to be able to continue this recognition for October. A little bit of background, how the month even got started, back in about the night, late 1980s, Congress declared Domestic Violence Awareness Month for October in an effort to get people together, agencies and organizations across the country to, to pretty much mourn those victims of domestic violence and to salute those that have been survivors and to raise the level of domestic violence. So it's really been in place for quite some time. And JBWS offers an array of sadly enough services, starting from a shelter, a transitional living, 24-hour hotline, legal advocacy program. They are, they were the lead agency in the Morris County Justice, Justice System. So they continue to be a vanguard in this much-needed social problem organization and are very appreciative when any recognition of this problem comes about. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia, and thank you for the background. Really appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you, Astri.
Okay, take care. Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay, so we will go on to reports from committees and public safety. Ms. Byrne?
Thank you, Mayor Bailey. From the fire department, during the month of September, the fire department responded to 32 general alarms, 14 still alarms, 98 investigations. The majority were pumpouts, 23 EMS calls, for a total of 170 calls for the month of September. Engine 2's fire pump has been rebuilt and is back in service. On Tuesday, September 28th, Black Meadows Mutual Aid Group, of which Madison is a member, sponsored an electric car class for first responders. Over 150 Morris County firefighters attended the class, which was held at the Morris County Fire Academy. Electric cars present unique challenges to firefighters should they be involved in an accident and/or catch fire. With more and more electric cars on the road, firefighters need to be aware of the different hazards when having to deal with them. After the class, Teslas and the Chevy Bolts were on hand for firefighters to see and learn more about them. Fifteen Madison firefighters attended the class. From the police department, from Acting Chief Misha, the police department had three promotions and one assignment change following the last council meeting on 9/27. Sergeant Sean Plumstead and Craig Pirelli were promoted to acting lieutenants, and Detective Julia Morello was promoted to sergeant. These promotions fill vacancies left due to retirements. In addition, Patrol Officer Jerry Mantone will be assigned to the detective bureau effective October 5th. Congratulations to all. Acting Chief Misha and Acting Captain Joe Longo attended training titled "Reimagining Public Safety." The event, a collaboration between Delta Sigma Theta, Madison Alliance on Racial Equity, and Drew University and other sponsor organizations, is envisioned as an opportunity for community members to expand their thinking about safety in our diverse communities and to engage them in working towards innovative approaches to safety for all citizens. And finally, on October 2nd, Bottle Hill Day went off without a hitch. All departments worked the event and the weather could not have been better. I would like to thank the mayor and council, Lisa Ellis, Susie Whitehorn, Fire Department, the Ambulance Corps, Public Works, and everyone else who made the day special and safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I guess the next to is myself on finance and borough clerk from the finance department. This Friday, we will be wiring over $5 million in payments. The first one will be to the Board of Education, which we do monthly. It's approximately 6, 3.6 million dollars. And we also have a debt payment of approximately 1.8 million, and this debt payment goes for the bonds issued in 2008 when we funded the renovations of Hartley Dodge, the Public Safety Building, and a fire truck. And this evening, we have two important presentations from our CFO, Jim Burnett. First, there'll be a short update on the 2021 municipal revenue. And we've heard at prior meetings that certain municipal revenues were down drastically in 2020 due to the pandemic. So this report was going to update us and kind of prepare us for our 2022 budget discussions. And he, it's updating on the amount collected for court dues, daily parking, and interest on deposits. And we had hoped that these revenues would have bounced back by now, but unfortunately, you'll see from the report that they're not quite where we want them to be. And then we're going to have a second presentation by our CFO on the State of New Jersey's Best Practices Checklist. The State Division of Local Government Services issued the checklist a few weeks ago. This list must be completed and submitted to the division by November 3rd, and that checklist includes 27 scored questions with a maximum score of 23 points. And there are various topics, including personnel, budget, cybersecurity, tax collection, and capital. And a municipality needs to score at least a certain number of points and pass, and I'm happy to report the Madison score was 21.5 out of 23 points. And so we will receive 100% of our state aid. And then the checklist also includes 21 unscored questions, which cover various topics, including shared services procurement and use of the American Rescue Plan funds. The Best Practices Checklist assesses Madison's compliance with various laws. It's a way for our residents to know that we're governing properly and, and helps the residents to evaluate our town's management. So if you're grading at home, 21.5 out of 23 equates to 93%, which gives us an A on our report card. So I'm very proud of Madison's fiscal and operational strength, and I want to thank Jim Bray and the whole staff and everybody, elected officials, past and present, because we all made this possible. And then from the clerk's office, earlier this year, historic legislation established in-person voting, early voting in New Jersey. So this makes our state even more voter-friendly and strengthens our democracy by expanding opportunities to exercise your right to vote. This new option allows registered voters to cast their ballot in person using a voting machine during a nine-day period prior to Election Day. So beginning October 23rd, you can now choose to vote in person when it's most convenient for your schedule. Every county will provide registered voters with this option for 2021 general election. They will designate in-person early voting locations that will be open Saturday, October 23rd through Sunday, October 31st, and the hours will be Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No appointment is necessary. The Madison Civic Center will be an early voting location. Applications provoked by mail ballots and voter registration forms are available in the borough clerk's office or online at morriselections.org. And the Madison Identification Card Program is once again underway, with appointments available on Tuesdays and Thursdays to any resident of the borough able to provide the requirements for establishing his or her identity and residency as set forth in the ordinance. So forms are available online or in the borough clerk's office, and you must call 973-593-3040 for more information and appointment. So that is the Finance and Borough Clerk's Report. Next, we will hear from Mr. Hoover on Public Works and Engineering and Bottle Hill Update.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Bailey. I appreciate it. From the Engineering Department, the Plaza, Merrill and Garaguso's restarted work on October 4th after several weeks off the job. Electrical conduit installation was advanced with concrete trench cutting. If conduit installation is finalized this week, the granite stair treads on the upper stair foundations and the upper Plaza granite pavers can be reset. Please note all general public access to the municipal building is through the West Wing courtroom. So Philly construction, general construction continued work on miscellaneous curb and sidewalk improvements across Madison. Additional committee and police requests to improve crosswalks were completed. Curb and sidewalk contracts will continue through next spring based on contractor availability and the long list of requests. Montana Construction Emergency Response to Debris Build Up in the Current, in the Culvert Between Keep Street and Kings Road Across the YMCA and New Jersey Transit Rail Properties is beginning on state property. Coordination with New Jersey Transit Rail allowed for a reimbursement agreement for work within the rail right-of-way, and Montana indicated that rail portion of the clearing work would be completed this month. For the Department of Public Works, DPW assisted with Bottle Hill Day operations. They started at 4:00 a.m., by the way, before, during, and after setting up barricades, roadblocks, removing trash cans, and cleaning up throughout the successful event. The Roads Department repaired multiple potholes and has been thoroughly running the street sweeper in the morning. The Sewer Division continues their quarterly jetting of low-lying areas, which will continue through the end of October. Updates are made regularly on rosenet.org. Mechanics or services, multiple police vehicles did a safety check and routine maintenance on the senior bus, as well as prepared all leaf equipment to be ready for the leaves starting the fall. The Parks Department has continued to maintain all playing fields, bathrooms. Recently, they did a repair to the drains at the new Dart Field Playhouse bathrooms, which was clogged with dirt. Trees for the re-fall planting have been delivered, and they will begin planting them in predetermined locations in the coming days. The Parks Department has removed multiple dead deer in borough open spaces that have died due to epizootic hemorrhagic disease. It's not transmittable to humans, as far as I know. O'Brien met with officials from a consulting firm on the shared service agreement for use of equipment and workforce we have with five other towns in the area as a mutual aid type agreement. Okay, for the Recreation Advisory Committee, Recreation Advisory Committee has conducted a survey of all participants in, in the RAF related to the Madison Athletic Foundation. They received 42 responses and hope to have the report ready for availability next, at the next meeting. With the Recreation Department, additional work on Sunny Vitali Memorial Field is now rescheduled, is scheduled to begin the week of October 18th. This project will give the infield another complete refresh, and both Rosedale outfields have been fully top-dressed and seeded. Registration for junior basketball is currently open to all madisonhoops.com, at madisonhoops.com. Recreation is working closely with the Board of Education to ensure we're able to offer as close to a full grammar program as possible in spite of some facility limitations due to COVID protocols. Additionally, recreation is in the process of evaluating the specific nature of all the winter programs. Please keep an eye on Rosenet. Its updates will be available as soon as they become available. And finally, they want to, the Recreation Department wants to thank everyone involved in the annual Pride Soccer Tournament, which took place at the both MRC fields this past weekend for a successful event. For the Madison Environmental Commission, the MEC celebrated Energy Efficiency Day on October 6th with easy ways to make a difference. These included cooking with lids on pots, sealing leaks around chimneys and recessed lights, and washing clothes in cold water, which will reduce energy usage by 90%. Modern detergents are designed to work in cold water. Thank you very much. When did you want me, did you want me to give a summary?
Yeah, I was, yeah, like, I, I think now would be the proper time. Thank you.
Perfect. I'd be glad to do that. Yeah, this was with the help of Lisa Ellis. After cancellation due to the pandemic in 2020, the much anticipated return of Bottle Hill Day on Saturday, October 2nd, 2021 was a tremendous success. The spectacular weather, the streets full of smiling people, and the remarkable sense of community all make Bottle Hill Day one of the very best festivals in the state. We thank all those who spent the day in Madison, New Jersey, celebrating. The Downtown Development Commission and the Madison Main Street Foundation thanks everyone whose participation made Bottle Hill Day 2021 such an outstanding event. This event is the primary fundraiser, and proceeds from the event will help finance many downtown programs and improvements. I particularly want to thank, this is from me, I particularly want to thank Lisa Ellis for her tireless commitment and absolute excellent job that she did on a terrific day. This year's sponsors included diamond sponsors, New Smile Orthodontics, Egan Wealth Advisors, and Riverside Oral Surgery. Stage sponsor, Mary Camito, State Farm. Platinum sponsors, Rothenburg Orthodontics, Providence Bank, and Jaguar Land Rover. Central Avenue Fun Zone, Amusement Center, and Central Smile LLC. Gold sponsors, the Chatham Club, J. Galomer, and Madison Education Foundation for the sponsorship of Dodger Drive. Silver sponsors, Tino's Artisan, Artisanal Pizza Company, Suburban Chiropractic Center, Madison Area YMCA, and Madison and Maine Advisors. Bronze sponsors, Kids World Pediatric Dentistry and Orthodontics, the Montessori Children's Academy, Game Changes Fitness, and New Horizons Day Camp. I mention all of those because I want you to, all, everybody to understand that these people really put out an effort to make this a successful day. The overwhelming generosity and support of all our sponsors helped make this day a great success. Fender interest in this event continues to grow. This year, over 225 businesses and nonprofit groups lined Waverly Place, Central Avenue, and Kings Road. The incredibly diverse offering of goods and services helps set this festival apart. Also have noticed the charitable impact of this event through the work of organizations such as Cookies for Kids Cancer, the Rotary Club of Madison, Epic, Madison Education Foundation, and St. Hubert's Gerada, et cetera, all raising funds to an awareness for great causes. Bottle Hill Day has also become a music festival within a street festival due to the talent and dedication of the volunteers to schedule the bands for the day. The musical performances were outstanding again this year. Brings a great sense of Madison pride that so many genuinely great artists live here, grew up here or both. Scheduling and manic performances on four stages is no easy task, and this year the effort was again led by Entertainment Committee chaired by Phil Duffy, Stacy Snyder, Madison Public Schools District Arts Coordinator, and Madison Music, Music and Arts arranged the student entertainment on our Green Village Road stage for most of the day. In addition, Stacy's daughter, Madeline Snyder, a fourth grader at Central Avenue School, wowed the crowd with her beautiful rendition of the National Anthem on Hartley Dodge Memorial Stage at Kings Road to open the event. Now to the event in 2019. New to the event in, in 2019, Dodger Drive on Green Village Road has proven to be a great addition and including the, the student stage there this year, as well as built-on success. I think I should have said new to the event in 2021. This area featured special activities at the Madison Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the Madison High School Class Council Mini Golf Course, and other activities, and a few select additional vendors. Security was flawlessly provided by the Madison Police Department and Auxiliary Police, led by Chief John Misha and Captain Joseph Longo, and the Madison Police Department, and additional support was provided by Sheriff Gannon and the Morris County Sheriff's Office, East Handover Police Department, Morris County Office of Emergency Management, Morris Township Police Department, and New Jersey Transit for their support. In addition, the event received support from Chief Louis DeRosa, Captain Ed Nun Jr., and the Madison Fire Department, Captain John Dew, President of Patricia Gaboro of the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps, Superintendent Ken O'Brien, who I've mentioned before and should be always mentioned, and the Madison Department of Public Works, and the Health Officer Michael Fitzpatrick, and the Madison Department of Health. Keeping everyone safe, managing the traffic, setting up and cleaning up afterwards are enormous tasks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. And we will now go on to utilities. Ms. Ehrlich?
Thank you. At the start of my report tonight, I would like to acknowledge that here in Madison, we are on the traditional territory of the Lenai Lenape people. Growing up myself in Berkeley Heights, we were taught in social studies about the Lenape people and their way of life on this land. This was taught as a kind of a natural history. There is no treaty to acknowledge as the Lenape were pushed out of this land by European settlers in the 1600s. I want to explain that territory acknowledgements are a way that people insert an awareness of indigenous, indigenous presence and land rights in everyday life. It's not meant to be a token gesture, but an invitation to think about settler colonialism and its history. And with this acknowledgement, I invite you, everyone listening and the council, to consider these issues and their impacts to our current relationship to the land and to human rights. From the Electric Department with the utility report, the Electric Department has been busy this month. They installed LED streetlights on Brunette Road and Glen Wild Road. They assisted Jim Trimble with installing 60 smart meters at the General Wayne Apartments on Sarah Court, and they installed three utility poles in the Cook Avenue parking lot so that Verizon can start to relocate their telecom cables ahead of the parking lot reconstruction downtown. There were four emergency call-outs this month for the standby crew, an emergency mark out on Rose Avenue for a suspected gas leak on October 4th. They reported loud bang on October 6th in the Green Avenue-Shanpike Road area, although no electrical issue was found. A partial power call on the Wanukua Way on October 10th, where they discovered a tree branch was rubbing on the service wire to the house, which they repaired. And finally, a downed wire with broken branches reported on October 11th on Station Road. The crew cut up the branches and rehung the wires. The Water Department reports that they continue to replace outdated water meters with new meters with automatic readers. And remind everyone that if you're interested in having your water meter updated, please call the Madison Water Department at 973-966-7330 to schedule an appointment. The Madison Water Department's annual fire hydrant and water main flushing program is now complete. And finally, a reminder from the Water Department to please be sure to winterize your automatic sprinkler systems before the cold weather sets in. Also, don't forget to shut off your outside spigots from inside your house, and please remove any hoses from your frost-proof faucets because if the water cannot drain away from the faucet, it will freeze anyway. A helpful tip from the Water Department. That's all from my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Ehrlich, and Mr. Landrigan, health. You're muted, muted.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, good.
The flu season is nearly upon us. All residents six months and older are encouraged to get a flu vaccine from their doctor, pharmacist, or clinic site. The Madison Health Department will be offering two public flu clinics this year, one on October 25th and the other on November 4th. Visit rosenet.org for more information and to schedule an appointment. In addition, the YMCA will host two clinics next week on October 18th and October 20th for residents 12 years of age and older. Visit the Madison Area YMCA.org for more times and, and more times and information. As the Delta variant remains a major concern in New Jersey, Madison reports 10 confirmed cases of COVID-19 since October 1st. Three of those cases were, individuals were fully vaccinated. The Madison Health Department now has access to all three COVID-19 vaccines, Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. If you are not vaccinated or need a Pfizer booster dose, please contact the Madison Health Department. Finally, given the current COVID-19 activity level, additional mitig- additional mitigation efforts such as wearing masks indoor, in indoor public settings, especially those that are crowded or where vaccination status of others is unknown, it is highly recommended to take precautions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landrigan. So communications and petitions, do we have any this evening?
None received, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Bailey, I'm sorry, but I, um, we skipped over this, but I do have a report for community affairs on behalf of Ms. Colly.
Oh, good. Oh, good. I, I was waiting for you.
If you were gonna call me up for that, but let me go ahead and do that now if you don't mind.
Absolutely, and then we'll, we'll continue with the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So, um, from the Downtown Development Commission and Director of Business Development, we received a lovely acknowledgement of all of the contributors and the hard work that went into Bottle Hill Day, which Councilman Hoover shared with us, and I too want to add my thanks to Lisa Ellis for her leadership, her great planning and the flawless execution this past Bottle Hill Day. The next regular meeting of the Downtown Development Commission will be held via Zoom on Thursday, October twenty-first. The Madison Farmer's Market is open at Dodge Field every Thursday through November eighteenth from one to six P.M. And the market will feature live music every week from four to six P.M. In Halloween events and news, the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps will be holding their annual trunk or treat and pumpkin illumination on Friday, October twenty-nine. The event begins at five P.M. and information can be found on the Isle of Madison, New Jersey Facebook page. Downtown, the newly, the new painted metal benches for the Downtown District have been delivered, and the DPW will be installing them shortly. The Gateway and Wayfinding signage project is ongoing. Concept plans were submitted by Merge, our specialty consultant, to the Steering Committee last week. And planning for holiday season events, including the Madison Holiday Arts Festival, is underway. The Chamber of Commerce has a news and agenda for our Halloween event on Saturday, October thirtieth. The Chamber Halloween Parade and Magic Show will run from twelve thirty P.M. to three o'clock that Saturday, the thirtieth. The schedule is as follows. At twelve thirty, the parade will start promptly in front of Hartley Dodge Memorial, and participants will march to Green Village Road to Main Street and then finish on Waverly Place and Lincoln Place. At one o'clock, the Joe Fisher Magic Show will be held there at the corner of Lincoln Place and Waverly. In case of rain, the show will be held inside at the Madison Community Arts Center at ten, number ten Kings Road at one P.M. And following the show from one thirty to three o'clock, children in costume are invited to trick or treat through the Downtown Business District. Participating stores will display a bright orange pumpkin in their windows. The Madison Community Arts Center reports that the fall community, the fall performance schedule is underway, and information about the performances there can be found on the MACA website. That's at madisonartsNJ.org. And a vendor has been identified for the lighting grid installation at the Arts Center, and we hope to be able to schedule the installation in early January. That's all for community liaison. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will now go on to invitation for discussion. And we're going to open the meeting to the public for their opportunity to ask questions and make comments on any discussion items on the agenda or resolutions. There will be another invitation period for discussion later in the meeting for any other subject. When you are recognized by the chair, the person, the person who is recognized to speak will proceed to the lectern and give his or her name and address in an audible tone of voice and print the same on the sheet provided for the record. He and she, he or she shall then limit the statement to three minutes or less. So the first discussion item is the Borough Revenue Update. The second one is the Best Practices Inventory. For the consent agenda resolutions, we have R two six three Resolution of the Borough of Madison, Amending Borough of Madison Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. R two six four Resolution of the Borough of Madison Appointing Frank Champy to the Position of Part-Time Violations Clerk. R two six five Resolution of the Borough of Madison Authorizing Execution of an Agreement for the Participation in the Joint Municipal Court of Madison Borough, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, and Morris Township. R two six six Resolution of the Borough of Madison Authorizing Medical and Prescription Drug Plan Offerings under the State Health Benefit Program of the State of New Jersey. Resolution two six seven Resolution of the Borough of Madison Authorizing the Term of the Current Madison Police Department Sergeant's Promotional List. Resolution two six eight Resolution of the Borough of Madison Appointing Thomas Riddleberger to the Position of Substitute Crossing Guard. Resolution two six nine is the Resolution of the Borough of Madison Authorizing Special Event Permit to allow the use of Niles Park by Covenant House, New Jersey for an overnight event on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. R two seventy Resolution of the Borough of Madison Authorizing the Use of Spaces in the public parking lot at the Civic Center by the Thursday Morning Club of Madison on November eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Resolution two seven one Resolution of the Borough of Madison in the County of Morris Determining the Form and Other Details of Its Note Relating to the Water Bank Construction Financing Program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, which is to be issued in the principal amount of up to six thousand, forty-two thousand dollars, and providing for the issuance and sale of such note to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank and authorizing the execution and delivery of such note by the Borough of Madison in favor of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, all pursuant to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank Water Bank Construction Financing Program. I hope you follow that. And then R two seven two Resolution of the Borough of Madison Approving the Temporary Signs for Family Promise of Morris County, and R two seven three Resolution of the Borough of Madison Authorizing the Use of the Civic Center by the Volunteers of the Madison Eagle Christmas Fund on Sunday, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. So the first person who is interested in speaking is Stephen Tyndall. Would you please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have a time limit of three minutes. Thank you. So Steve, can we hear you?
You know, I noticed that Mr. Tyndall's hand's been raised for the entire meeting. It might have been a accidental click.
Okay, so is there anybody else who would like to participate and ask a question tonight? Or speak to these items? All right, seeing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting, and we will go on to agenda discussions. Our CFO, Jim Burnett, will discuss items one and two, Borough Revenue Update, and Best Practices Inventory twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to present. I'm gonna pull up a very short presentation. On the screen here, do you guys see it? There we go. Okay, so just a short revenue recap. As Mayor Bailey mentioned, revenues are still very problematic. There were three major revenues that we were tracking last year that fell significantly from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty during the pandemic, paper court revenue, parking fees, and interest on our bank deposits. We were hoping that they would start to come back. And unfortunately, they have not, as you can see from the chart here. I think you could see my, my pointer. We are starting to see them come up a little bit in August. I believe that was due to a number of failure to appear cases that have been worked through the court, so we're not exactly sure if we're gonna get back to these type of levels of fourteen thousand to fifteen thousand dollars a month worth of revenue. But it is definitely gonna be off for the year twenty twenty-one. We're hopeful that it will come back in twenty twenty-two, but we really have to monitor that. The second revenue is parking fees. This is not the parking permits that are annual paid. This is the daily lot. And it's, it's been very low. As you can see, we were collecting anywhere from five to six to almost eight thousand dollars a month, and it obviously really dropped off after the pandemic and, and hasn't gotten, hasn't gotten better since. So, um, so, uh, you know, hopefully, as we hear our friends are heading back into New York City, our communities are heading back into New York City, that will come back, but certainly not gonna come back even next year, I think, to the eighty thousand dollar level that we had in, whoops, in twenty nineteen. And then finally, the revenue for interest on deposits, these are the bank deposits, and short-term investments that Borough was permitted to invest in for cash management plan. In twenty nineteen, the actual revenue was four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, it was a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. If you look at this line here, we're probably not gonna make sixty thousand dollars this year, so that is a significant top off in revenue there. And if you look at all of them together, whoops, I apologize, this, this chart here shows them in summary that, that two thousand nineteen, it was six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Twenty twenty, it's about two hundred thousand. We're probably estimate gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand this year. So that's a loss of a million dollars over two years, just in these revenue lines. And how we, how do we deal with that? We reduced capital last year. We have some significant bond debt that we're gonna have to start to take on with the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting, long-term debt, hundreds of thousands of dollars we're gonna start paying back in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. My, I, I believe that we're gonna be having to continue to keep capital spending at a lower level than we would like in, in twenty twenty-two. So graphically, this chart here, the table here on the left-hand side, or the R chart on the left-hand side, shows the revenue by year and how much it has fallen. So that's just a quick summary of those major items. All the other revenue lines are, are, are okay. There are some that bounced significantly, like construction when you have a large development, like Doralda Farms, where we had a major allelican renovation there. Revenues can be up, but other revenues are in line, but just these three alone, we're looking at a half million dollar revenue loss with. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions. It's really just basically to keep you informed and give you a primer on what we're gonna be looking at in our budget season for twenty twenty-two.
Any questions? So Jim, um, do you, I mean, we're gonna be reducing capital, but are, are we going to lose any services to the residents?
That's a good question. We're, that, that's not the plan. No, obviously, we're, you know, we're not looking to change any of the services, whether it be garbage or leaf or any of the major services, library hours, anything like that. We're looking to fully fund those items. It is, we are going into union negotiations on all of our, all of our contracts, police, fire, public works, the electric linemen, the white collar Federation employees. And, you know, it's, it's a challenge with that unknown as well. But our hope is to not have any change in staffing or services in twenty twenty-two.
Any, any other questions? Mr. Landrigan?
Yes, Jim, I can see why the pandemic would have hurt the parking revenue. Clearly, not that many people are going back into this city. But as far as the interest revenue goes, what's really driving that down? So that's where we have our biggest hit.
Yeah, exactly. Good question, Councilman Landrigan. It's the interest rates. The interest rates really dropped significantly from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. There is talk of inflation. Inflation would be reflected in higher interest rates if that does happen. We could see that come back, but that's definitely not something we're gonna be able to anticipate in the rest, in, in the budget in the following year. Where budget law says if we only got fifty thousand dollars in interest revenue in twenty twenty-one, we can anticipate two hundred thousand interest revenue in twenty twenty-two because we can only anticipate in the budget, book in the budget, the following year, what we incurred the previous year. So we're gonna be hamstrung, but hopefully, if it does come back, we'll be able to adjust that in future years.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Hoover.
Jim, I'm just wondering, you know, kind of crazy thinking, I think, but have we considered any other options to generate income? Any new initiatives that could potentially generate income to offset that loss of income that we're getting from those three sources? I don't know what they, I don't know what it might be, but you know, if we could put on fairs, events, rent out the, the parking lots, uh, stuff like that.
Actually, probably the most logical one, you guys are asking great questions and helping me to kind of tee up some topics. One logical one may be to increase the water rates, which will allow us to generate more revenue in the water utility. Our water rates, as were presented last year during the budget cycle, are really a third to a quarter of what you would pay elsewhere. Madison resident may take, may pay two hundred and fifty dollars a year in a water bill. If you live in New Providence, you could pay six hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty dollars a year. So that is something that, that we could look at, and I would advocate that on a long-term basis, to have some sort of small escalator because water is a finite resource. You know, we talked about this at the Utility Advisory Committee with Councilwoman Erlich just last week, where years ago, Madison had an artesian well that the water bubbled up out of the ground. So think Jed Clampett and the Beverly Hillbillies when shot the bullet and the crude came bubbling up. That's the type of water. We had it literally from the hydrostatic pressure bubbled up out of the ground. That's no longer the case in Foreman, Water Utility Foreman Tom DiBiase told us, we have to go down sixty-five to seventy heat in our, in our well before we hit water and can start pulling it up through our pumps. So as Mayor Bailey has been advocating for years, the aquifer recharge is, is critical, and the aquifer is dropping significantly. So, uh, so water is a, a critical resource, a finite resource, and having a more market rate-oriented water rate, I think, would be appropriate. So that, that's a great question, Councilman Hoover, and that's something we should be discussing.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be good for us to consider, besides the water, consider other options, you know, that might be able to generate more income for the, for the borough. I, I, just a thought.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other questions? Mr. Burnett, okay, we will now go on to Best Practices Inventory.
So Mayor Bailey did a great job teeing up the Best Practices Checklist. It is a great, it is a score. It is a grade. I'm telling my kids when I go home that we got an A. You know, they're the ones that were showing me their report cards. Now I'm gonna show them our report card. And, and Ray and I are very proud of this, and I, I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Bailey. This is the work of current and past elected officials that make this happen. For example, one of the questions says, have you passed or updated your employee handbook? And we're actually doing that tonight. So keeping things active like that is exceptionally important. It's questions on personnel, on the budget, on cybersecurity, and on passwords and training that we're doing for our staff to, to keep on that test on cybersecurity. Budget, financial administration, procurement, shared services, or even a few questions on fire districts. We don't have a fire district, so we answer not applicable to that and alike. And so this list will be posted on Rosenet tomorrow. If anybody has any questions, actually, the last three years of our Best Practices Checklist will be posted. I know Council and Mayor Bailey received a copy of this over on, on Monday, or I apologize, on Tuesday, and if you have any questions, I'm willing to entertain them now.
Right. Any questions for our CFO? Yes, Ms. Erlich?
Thanks, Jim, and congratulations on the great parade. Can you talk about any scoring based on sustainability that focuses on environmental best practices or energy transition?
So, so this was the first year they had a scored question on the environment. So that's, that's kind of exciting, and we were able to get points for it. You could get half a point if you answered yes to the following question. Have public electric vehicle charging stations been installed? Or are they currently being installed on municipal property? And the answer is yes. We have them at the lot. We have five stations throughout town now. We actually have another five stations that Russ Brown is working on. We received the second grant, thanks to the help with Lisa Ellis is really shepherding this project. And so we have another five vehicle charging stations or dual charging stations, so two cars can charge at that. But yes, it's the first time there's been any question of sustainability or the environment. So that was, that was exciting to see, and I'm glad we got the points.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Burnett? Seeing none, we will go on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Yes, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing or introduced by title and passed on a first reading of meeting of the council. meeting of the council held on September the 27th, 2021. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
So I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 40, 2021, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison Appropriating $125,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for repairs to the water and light plant building.
I open the hearing for ordinance 40-2021. Seeing no questions, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2021.
And I second it. Any discussion? Could I have a vote?
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Thank you. I declare ordinance 40-2021 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Would the clerk please read the title for ordinance 41-2021?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison Appropriating $50,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for LED retrofit kits and replacement bulbs in existing Victorian lamp posts.
I open the hearing for ordinance 41-2021. I don't see anybody raising their hand. Question? I close the hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move ordinance 41-2021.
A second? And is there any discussion? And then we have a vote.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Thank you. I declare ordinance 41-2021 adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. So we now come to the second of our invitation for anyone to discuss any topic. You raise your hand, you will be recognized, and you must state your name and address in an audible tone of voice, and you have three minutes of discussion time. Are there any members that would like to say anything at this point in the audience? I don't see anyone, so we'll close this portion of the meeting. There is, we don't have any introduction of ordinances?
Actually, Mayor, there was someone that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I am sorry. We have Courtney Saib. Hi.
Hi, yes, my name's Courtney Saib, and I'm at 12 Woodcliff Drive.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I'd like to talk about the Drew Woods. I am a neighbor of Drew, and I agree that it's in Madison's best interest to ensure it succeeds as a university. I applaud the town's representatives for their efforts regarding this issue thus far. My understanding is that Drew has a financial problem. In order to help solve that problem, Drew has approached the town asking to rezone forested university use land for residential use in order to maximize said land value for a sale, the proceeds of which would help improve Drew's financial position. What would be helpful is getting a look at Drew's full financial picture so that we can assess the true extent of the financial problem they are trying to solve. Has this been disclosed to the town? My understanding is that Drew can sell land as it wishes today, but only to another buyer for university use. So in other words, the town of Madison is creating value for Drew if it chooses to rezone it. Can you explain the process of how the town is coming to a decision on this issue? How will this decision interact with the zoning board, the planning board, and/or the council? And in the event the town chooses to rezone only a portion of the subject land, how will that portion be decided upon? Finally, in the event Madison opts to rezone land for a developmental bid, will there be ample time and space provided for a conservation bid to be properly considered, considered as an alternative? Aside from the environmental impact of losing a diverse green space, I am concerned about the impact of additional residents to the area. This will result in increased traffic and an increased population taxing an already at-capacity school district. As a mom to four Madison public school kids, I can attest that I have seen the effects of a school busting at the seams firsthand, which is a big reason why I'm so invested in what the town representatives decide here. Any insights and answers you can provide is much appreciated. If you'd like me to repeat any of the aforementioned questions, I'm happy to do it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, Courtney. I think I will turn this over to our attorney or our Borough Administrator Ray Cody to answer what they can. I think that would be the best way to proceed.
All right, Mayor, I can take it.
Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Thank you. The, the normal process would be, the Borough has a full-time planner, Dr. Susan Blickstein, who would evaluate any requests submitted by Drew formally through their planner. Once that material is digested by the planner, it would be presented to the planning board in a public meeting forum for the planning board to consider potential consideration. From there, it would be referred, if it was acted unfavorably by the planning board, it would be referred for a public process before the Borough Council, where public comment would be invited and entertained in terms of that. There would be, this is gonna be a very long process, because one of the first steps would have to be an analysis of the suitability of the property of Drew in terms of the wetlands and delineation, natural resource inventory, and multiple other issues that will be part of the planning review process by Dr. Blickstein. So I would say stay tuned, and that'll be a very public, formal process that the public will be invited. And obviously, anyone within 200 feet of the property will get a very specific notice of all activity related to the Drew campus. But as of right now, there's no formal action being entertained by the Borough or by the Borough Planning Board. There's a, that will be shortly started by our planner, Dr. Blickstein.
We did pass the resolution, though, of support for preservation of the woods a couple of months ago.
The Borough Council did, yes.
Yeah, the Borough Council did, so.
And we've also engaged the land conservancy by expanding the relationship under their contract for them to handle, hopefully, the, the preservation effort for any land identified that as surplus by Drew, but rather than be developed, hopefully would be preserved through a process where the, there would be compensation to Drew, which would stabilize them financially, but at the same time, potentially, the land would be preserved through the efforts of the land conservancy in the borough. And that's the goal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cody. Are there anybody else who would like to make a statement or a question tonight? All right, seeing none, we are going on to introduction of ordinances. We don't have any, so we'll go on to Consent Agenda. Would the clerk read the following statement?
Yes, Consent Agenda Resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the Consent Agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move Resolution 263-2021 to Resolution 273-2021.
Second?
Thank you. Are, do we need to pull any, or can we vote them as a group? All right, we have any discussion? All right, could we have a vote?
Ms. Bailey?
Yes to all.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Thank you. There, we don't have any unfinished business. Could we have approval of the vouchers? A motion?
No, I have to read. So for the current fund, we have $337,245.29. For the general capital fund, $102,375.67. For the electric operating fund, $105,735.44. For the water operating fund, $8,241.68. And for the trust, $28,379.96. The total is $581,996.4.
Okay, now we need a motion.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Thank you, Ms. Byrne. And could we have a vote?
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Thank you, and I don't think we have any new business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great job. Thank you so much, everybody.